Okay, I am dreaming and recording, so I say we go with it.
Would you like to lead the flag salute today?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Wayland.
Here.
Commissioner Sweat.
Who?
Have you?
Oh, here.
Chair Oler.
Oh, here.
Here, is it Oler or is it?
It's Oler.
Okay, just making sure, I was like, oh no, have I been saying it wrong for two years? And then Chair Elliott, present, Commissioner Johnson and Elmsted called ahead for to be excused.
I make a motion to excuse Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Elmsted from tonight's meeting.
So seconded.
All right, all those in, we've had a motion to excuse Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Elmsted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Right, motion passes, five zero. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to tonight's agenda? All right, we'll move on to citizen participation. Hi, video audience, with that said, nobody is present today, so we will continue on to approval of minutes for February 15th, 2024, open it up for discussion.
Motion to approve the minutes for Thursday, February 15th, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes of February 15th, 2024, that's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes, five zero unanimous. And then on to our regular agenda. Item 6A is procedural streamlining, an introduction and discussion of this topic. And with that, I will turn it over to staff.
Thank you. Hate sitting in this spot, but I haven't figured out a better way yet. So yes, so before you, so the legislature passed several bills last year, and we're gonna try to hit, get all of them done as best we can.
We're talking these that we just passed out, right?
So the ones, since we sort of had this gap this month while they're kind of figuring out the comp plan, and I know some of the others were gonna deal with housing at the end of the year, I wanted to at least kind of introduce the various ones that deal with the permit processing procedures and start talking about what my thinking is on those. And so, so tonight, we're gonna talk about, a little bit about the goal, so basically, the goal and the intent of Senate Bill 5290, Senate Bill 5412, and House Bill 1293 are in essence, they're all trying to streamline the process of permit review and approval when possible. And so as I started to look at those, and I started looking at our code, and with my last couple of years of processing projects, it really felt like it was a good time to look at kind of the whole package of our project review. And so first off, as far as I can, according to the, if you look on the code online, our current kind of procedure codes were adopted in 2009, and I don't believe anything has changed since then. And then, so again, there's some state goals, but I also think in general, it's a good time to look at making sure that we're doing these properly and as, again, efficiently as possible. I did look at some of the other cities, and I know Commissioner Wayland today asked for some recommendations and some sites on MRC, so I will email those out to the group of, there's two different sites, there's two different pages on MRC that talk about these various changes, as well as some recommendations of some of the cities. A lot of cities haven't updated theirs recently, I talked to like Fife and Edgewood, and it's, they're gonna do that later. Bonnie Lakes has been recently done, I'm a little hot, so I might bring myself down. And Gig Harbor's looked, it's been recently done, and it was on the MRC recommendation as well as Shoreline, so those are some. But when I, so I also then did talk to various cities to see how they process different types of permits, to compare to what we are. And kind of where I'm going with this is, if, what I would like to get to, and we'll go through all of this, well, I guess real quick, finish off my staff report, I guess. I put a rough schedule, that may get hijacked if we get doing other stuff, we have until the middle of next year, but I don't want to push everything till the end of the year if there's a few things we can do earlier. And so again, my thinking is, I'm introducing it this month, figuring two months of discussions with a hearing in May, with the idea that it would come back in June maybe for a recommendation, that gives us plenty of time to go through everything. So when I went through kind of my initial take, and where I've kind of come up with my initial suggestions for some of this, is that for both, you know, for the applicants, for staff, for residents, that, you know, we want to make sure that they're clear, efficient, and direct. Criteria should be as objective as possible, this is, this is both sort of a state mandate, as well as it just makes life better, you know, developers want to know, just tell me what I need to do. Obviously, staff wants to be clear on what we're doing, so the less, more specific and objective, it's better. And then the level of review should match the level of impact. And so this is where I am going to be recommending some changes that we can look at, is that if a use is allowed outright, then it really should have the minimum process, should be fairly straightforward. If we feel like maybe our criteria, or not our criteria, if maybe our standards need to be boosted up, we're gonna be doing that over the next couple of months too, so that can be looked at. But if it's allowed outright, it really should be a pretty easy process. If there's more unknowns, and usually for us, that means we've said like, hey, this is a conditional use permit, or this is a special use permit or something, then that makes sense that it would be a more, more, I don't know if complicated is the right word, but it feels like that, but a more diligent and have a few more steps involved. The challenge with public notice and comments is they can be very valuable, or they can be very frustrating. And so we have to remember that public notice and comments is not to gauge public approval, applications that meet the criteria must be approved. So I think that's some of the frustration with some of the things that we've had, is it was kind of like, well, you're asking for my, for public opinion, but if they meet the criteria, it's gonna pass no matter the public criteria, or public opinion or not. So you want to, if, if you're taking, you want to take public opinion, and their comments for projects, again, that fall into that, they're unusual kind of things. But if something's allowed outright, the idea of having public hearings and public comment, all it's gonna do is frustrate people and make the process more complicated. And so then, so again, fine tuning that, so then, again, the largest projects that do have at least temporary impacts during construction should require a notice to neighbors, like, hey, they're going to be building this here, it may impact you a little bit, we definitely want to let you know about that. Any project that requires SEPA does also require noticing and comments. So any project that requires SEPA will still need that. And then, again, unusually large or unique projects might need greater notice, and I know that's something that Commissioner Boyle had talked about for some of these, you know, when we did maybe the warehouses, or when we did certain things, it might have been nice to have more, a broader update. And then again, we're updating the new timelines and just trying to bring consistency, there's, again, there's times, like every time we update a chapter, there's, we used, I don't know how many terms we used for whoever's the head of planning. There's planning director, land use director, administrator, planner, so trying to, at least in this section, let's, I'm gonna find something and we're gonna stick to it, and then we can use that, like going forward, this is what we want to use. And I think there's, whatever I think in the definitions, we'll probably end up using. So that's sort of where I started from, and again, I wanted to make sure that as we, before we start analyzing what goes where, we need to understand what each processing type does. And so that's where I went through the first part of, again, so you should have page seven, just kind of is a reminder of what our, I tried to kind of summarize what our processing types are. And I realized I did not print myself something that I sent to all of you guys earlier, but I'll find that later. All right, so process type one. It's administrative, meaning staff, these are routine, there's no notice, no comment period, it's got, basically, there's criteria that we're checking off, and we're gonna issue a permit or a document. If someone is gonna challenge it, it would go to Superior Court. These are things like building permits, boundary lines adjustment, engineering, civil permits, so just, that's sort of what falls into that category.
And if I may, before we get into the process types, can we check for, just that everyone understands the objectives before we get into process types? I just like to make sure we have certain pauses, since we're kind of trying the less interruptions approach. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the objectives before we get into going over the process types? Yes, Commissioner, or Vice Chair Oler?
My understanding of our objectives is that we are going to simplify this process so that it moves quickly, that we're going to make sure that it's fairly adjudicated and not unfairly adjudicated, and everybody understands what the process is. Those are the main objectives, to my understanding. Simplify the process.
That was, that's what I'm hoping, yes, so that's, again, the idea that we look at, that looking at projects, those that are very straightforward, have the lowest level of processing, those that have more, maybe complicat, you know, more variables are at a higher level. And with that, streamlining where we can along the way, so that's, yeah, that's kind of where, again, those are, some of that's my objectives, but I'm hoping that's, that I think that parallels what I am getting from what the states' objectives are, and I think it's good for cities to, I mean, I think our comp plan probably will say that, that, you know, you're trying to, you don't want to make people jump through hoops unnecessarily, so that's where I'm at.
Okay, and Commissioner Boyle, do you have any questions or comments as far as the objectives go, or what's been discussed so far?
Commissioner Boyle.
Sorry, Boyle, I'm looking at you, and yeah, sorry, Commissioner Sweat.
Now, I'm looking at these.
Yeah.
And that's what we're talking about at the moment, but this notice of 500 feet, how well did that play for you when they started building that structure down there, you know, the warehouse and everything? Because you live right off that main street, don't you?
Yeah, so without getting into the process types, I will say.
Backed up to page eight.
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at just page six on this so far, but when it came to the 500 feet, I was within the line, so I was oblivious to the fact that my neighbors weren't as well notified. So that's, it worked okay for me because I was within the zone, but my neighbors were outside that zone.
But it affected not only you, but it affected everybody on that road, all the way to the,
Yeah.
a little roundabout and everything.
Yeah, and that's some of the feedback I think we'll give today, is that if a project was to imply road improvement projects, everyone within 500 feet of that complete project.
We'll get into that a little bit more in a little bit.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
Perfect, Commissioner Wayland?
So on the objectives, before even getting to that, I was curious if Manager Stahlnecker had a comment on why it took three different bills to say what regulatory reform said in, what, 2008, '07, you gotta streamline, put all the information together, make it easy, straightforward. What is it about those, why did it take three bills, not that you're the legislature writing it, but what is it about them that tripped your perspective for the ones that were listed on page five, site plan, conditional use permits, and on down? Could you comment on that, please?
Yeah, so from, again, I mean, part of it's just the legislature, different people propose what they think are improvements to different sections. Each one of these is a little bit different. The one, interestingly enough, is kind of straightforward, but so, let's see, make sure I get the right one, so 520, 5290, it does adjust some of the time, it used to be everything was 120 days, it's adjusted into three different time limits depending on what kind of review, some of them are shorter, some of them are actually, the longest is actually the most time-consuming process, procedure, actually, they've given a longer timetable through, which is great. They've also added penalties, because the first round didn't have penalties, they were hoping that cities would just do and follow that, but there are enough cities, I guess, that are not hitting those deadlines, that now they have incorporated penalties, that if you don't hit those deadlines, there, you, you have to pace back to the applicant certain parts of their application fees. And then it also, which does not apply to us, there's some reporting back to the state on how you're doing, but that's only for cities over 20,000, so that part is the one thing that doesn't affect us. 5412, which is something that I have not, has, have, I'm not really looking to tackle at this exact moment, but it does, the idea is that right now, there are what's called SEPA thresholds, so there's certain things, like if a building is over 400, like a commercial building is over 400,000, you have to do a SEPA determination, do you think it's gonna be impactful or not? Most of the time, the determination is going to be non-significant, or non-significant as long as they do a couple little tiny things. Part of that being, when we, when SEPA was adopted, I don't know, a couple decades ago, there was very little environmental law, so they needed something for them to review. So they said, fine, anytime a big project comes in, you're gonna review it for these things. Well, now, all cities have, we have critical area ordinances, we have environmental rules, and if a, if a project follows all of those environmental rules, there's really no SEPA left to really, in most cases, to, to review. So the SEPA law a couple of years ago, and then this one adds to it, is you can actually up those, so instead of 4,000, you could say, you know, it has a threshold that you could up those thresholds, to say, we don't require a SEPA determination unless it's over 8,000 or 12,000, or they don't have to do it, right, like I think right now, it's, if it's over four lots, for like a short plot or a subdivision, I think you can raise that to 12 or 15 or something. So if a city wants to, they can go through this process, and the state kind of has it, like you can do these certain things. So that might be something we would want to do in the future, I didn't want to personally tackle that one with everything else we're doing, and I get nervous when I mess with the critical areas. But it also says, but I don't think it, again, it doesn't really affect us, that, like, it does autumn, it sort of blanket says for large cities on the west side, that if it's a housing project at X amount, they don't have to worry about SEPA. But again, that doesn't affect us, so for the most part, right now, 5412 does not, I don't believe, based on my understanding, it's part of it, but it doesn't really directly affect us. And then the last one, again, it's, it's interesting, because it's sort of more just, really emphasizes the idea that as much as possible, we should be streamlining, make sure that things can be, if you can, review things concurrently, you try to do that, that kind of stuff. And it does say that, you know, encourage to adopt project review provisions to provide prompt coordinated review. It's kind of like, it's almost like this is the theory behind it, and the other one's more the practical, though I think I'm not, one's a House bill, and I think one might be a, yeah, Senate bill, so I don't know exactly why it took three, but other than they sort of hit different things, so, if that helps.
Two are Senate bills, one's a House bill.
So House Bill 1293, ESHB, is sort of, like I said, it's, it talks a lot about trying to streamline, it does talk about design review, which we don't have a lot of, so it's sort of more focused on that, but it also just tackles being more efficient and expedite where you can. Especially, again, then this is, I guess, where some of my objectives come in, is the idea that, you know, if a project meets, you know, is consistent with the development regulations and the infrastructure, then don't make it complicated, is sort of what it's trying to say on part of it. And then it talks about design, again, design review, you can have it, but it needs to be objective. And that's, we don't have that, but there are certain cities that sort of have committees, and they just sort of analyze, well, that's very, it depends on who's on your committee, it depends, and so developers get very frustrated, committee members get very frustrated, I think, I would suspect there's probably been lawsuits. So again, trying to get that more objective, less subjective.
Okay. And I don't mean to jump in line. So we've changed the process, I want to make sure that I give it to Commissioner Boyle first. Commissioner Boyle, do you have any questions or comments?
Not yet.
Okay, now I can take it back to the beginning, and if you have another question or comment.
I had a follow-up to Commissioner Wayland's question, it seems like there's grant money associated with this, is that right?
There's what?
Grant money to the city associated with this, is that correct?
Some of the grant money is, some of this also talks about getting electronic processing, online processing for permits, and there's some grant money for that. We are really close, that's I think one of the areas, COVID sort of pushed a lot of us there that probably wouldn't have otherwise. And so we are, we are basically electronic, starting as of January, we hybrid kind of last year. Starting in January, people email us their applications, we put it in our system, we email them the link to the online portal with instructions, and they upload, and then everything is exchanged that way, they can call finance, we email them an invoice, they can call finance to pay over the phone if they want. So we, we are just about there, there is like a third party we could pay that would let them pay through the portal, but it's something we'll look at at some point, but for now, it works pretty well. No, some cities have gone like, you have to use the portal, we are small enough and small town enough that if some resident comes in and it's on paper, we will just scan it and put it in ourselves. I want to keep that, I don't see any reason why we can't do that, we're not dealing, and I get it for big cities, they're dealing with huge companies that are sending them stuff all the time, we're not doing that. So if someone comes in, we can do it the old-fashioned way, and we just scan it form and stuff, but, so we are basically there, so I don't see our need for that, and I think that's where a lot of the money was going. We'll keep an eye out, Commerce is really good, if they do end up having money for staff, they send it out, and their grants are wonderful, because it's basically, here, we have this grant money, apply, we apply, you send them your documents that show you did the work, and they give you the money. So if anything comes out now in that way, we will jump on it.
All right, any further questions, just going down the row?
Not at this time.
Yes, Commissioner Wayland?
So on this overall change that we're looking at, are any of these bills, or is your experience saying we need to change our process type table, not for the categories, but the pre-application meeting, the neighborhood meeting, I mean, is there a step that you look at and say, gosh, that's not enough, or we need to do more?
I don't think so, so you're asking, like, what we require for process one, not what's in process one.
Correct, so I'm talking about.
This, yes.
This column, the first.
Yeah. I don't, I think we're pretty good with that, I'm gonna make one suggestion, because I'm gonna recommend adjusting some, I'm gonna kind of try to make a suggestion that I think will add a nice little compromise to what we've been, to what I think we could do, and when I get, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but, but other than that, I don't think we need to, other than the times. So like I said, it'll be that, like, process two, and I'm not sure if I have it completely identified, but depending on, right now, everything's 120 days. Now, it doesn't count, I will say that too, and this is a lot, this is why I figured today, we would just start with trying to understand all of it, before we start trying to decide what we want, may hopefully want to change. So for processing time, again, the state says for land use stuff, you have 120 days, that's for city time. So once I get all of my people, all my reviewers back, they've told me their comments, I send a letter, this is your official comment letter number one, I get to stop the city's time. So if they take three months to get back to me, that's their problem. And then once they send me stuff, and it does say they have to send me everything, because that's another thing. Again, some of it's fixing, because you use something long enough, and you're like, oh, you didn't think about that, so like, you've asked for four things, they give you three, do you have to start your clock, do you not have to start a clock? Some of this clarifies that, some of it's in the cities' favor, like I said, they're moving that 120 for the big projects to 150, and there's some stuff that says, now, we have to make sure we write it, like my letter says, you have to give me everything, but if they only give me three out of the four, I don't have to start my clock. Or if they go so long, I get to say, you get one more month, and then we're withdrawing you, and you're going away. Because I've got a couple too, that just sort of like, oh, we want to keep hanging on, but then they never quite get in, so that'll, you know, some of that is actually helping cities, it's kind of, again, it's like, we're, the cities have to be real specific, but if we're real specific, and some of this actually helps us, so.
All right, continuing down the road, do you have any questions or comments? I have to keep going around the screen?
I know, I, it's gotta be a better way.
But, okay. Perfect, so now that we're clear on just the objectives of why we're discussing this, we'll go ahead and have staff continue with current processes, we'll take another round of just Q and A after current processes, and then get into reasoning and thoughts on potential changes, if that works for the group.
So, yeah, so let's, if you're looking at page seven and page nine, page nine is a simplified, simplified version of our codes' current table. I took out some stuff that I didn't think, just to kind of like get to the bare bones. And then I tried to, on page seven and eight, just sort of, again, kind of put it in a different way of what that means. So for process one, like I said, on page seven, it's, it gets, it's the administrative, it's a building permit that comes in, someone's building a house, someone's building a deck, they're remodeling a home, it comes in, our building official looks at it, or if it's clearing, grading, or engineering, they look at it, we issue a permit, everything's fine. So if you look on page nine, it kind of goes through, it's the civil site development, clearing and grading, one and two dwelling houses, ADUs, sign permits, BLAs, final short plots, and then this, under the new code, small wireless facilities or additions to existing facilities. So that's sort of, right now, is the easiest, straight in, straight out. Process two is administrative, so again, staff is reviewing it. Again, still, it's, it's still very routine, it's just instead of getting a permit, they're sort of getting a written approval letter from staff. So it's things like a code interpretation, home occupation permits, there's a couple places, like they can have a deviation for landscaping, final subdivision, and then, which actually, the final subdivision actually goes back to the hearing examiner, there's just no comments or herrings, it's like she just checks that it matches what she approved. And then Uptown, because we do have the Uptown District, that's the one area that we do have a design review booklet, and staff goes through, and again, check, 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 it all means. Process three is, again, staff level. Process Three is, again, staff level, but there is a notice for 500 feet of property with a 15 day comment period. Again, staff's going to look at the criteria and then we're doing some sort of written notice of approval. So, and again, these are things like minors, anything under 2,000, 2,000 square feet, preliminary short plots, so that's four or less, and anything, and if someone did just a SEPA without anything else with it, which is extremely unusual, sometimes they want to do it ahead of time, that falls under that category. So right now, and, and basically, the two, three, and four are where we're going to kind of do some discussion on, of what I'm thinking. And so Type Four is what they call quasi judicial, so it's the hearing examiner. It's sort of like court, but not quite like court, that's why it's the quasi. You have to swear in. So those are things like the preliminary subdivision, so anything over four lots, binding site plans, so like lakeside estates. If they were apartments, they would have just been like a major site plan kind of thing. But because they did the binding site plan, so in essence, that means they can sell each little one independently, but they're still joined together and they share all the property. It's sort of like condoing. It's a special category and is under the hearing. Major wireless, again, if they put an actual new tower, and then major site plan approval, conditional use permits, and then we only have currently one type of variance. So for Type Four, it's a notice of 500 to neighborhood, with a neighborhood meeting, which is just discussion, let people know what's going on at the beginning of the process, as soon as we can get to it. And then a public hearing at the end. It's the approval by the hearing examiner based on criteria. There's a written staff report that basically says we, in most cases, we recommend for this reason. There was one that was going to be, we don't recommend, and then they backed off and they're redoing their stuff because it didn't meet the criteria. And then again, the hearing examiner will do a written notice of approval. And again, those are major site plan approvals, conditional use permits, and subdivisions. So we're going to stop there, before we get into what should change. Is there any questions on what we do now?
Yes. Vice Chair Oler.
I am curious about the hearing examiner. Now, that's at the county level, correct? That means it goes to either Pierce County or King County hearing examiner?
No, so we have, we hire, we contract with a hearings examiner. She happens to be out of Seattle, but that just happens to be that we have a contract with them. We could have contracted, before, we just contracted with Mr. Casso. Basically, they are land use attorneys in most cases that you have a contract with. And so they come in and act as a, like again, as a quasi judge, hearing it. And then they'll look at the city's criteria, they'll look at the staff report. Again, they'll, they take public testimony, depending on what type of project it may or may not influence or not. But they do all that, and then they usually, she usually takes about another two weeks to write up an official approval letter. That also serves as the appeal for some of these. So some of the staff level decisions could be appealed if somebody that was on the record didn't like it, if they appealed it, it would go to the hearing examiner. So ours right now happens to be a contract, it's Susan Drummond. I had met her at a previous location and she was the only one that responded to our request, but I knew her, so I was very confident when we hired her, so.
Continuing down the row, any questions or comments about the existing process?
Not at this time.
Would you repeat the question, please? I was kind of lost by it. What are we doing now?
So we're just asking.
Manager Stalnack proposed a question and.
I guess I was, my question is, is there any questions on the current processing types and processing procedures? Before we start talking about what I might want to change or what anyone else might want to change, I just kind of want to make sure we good understanding how we do what our code currently says. Does that make sense?
Just a comment and a question. I want to thank you for doing this printout because it was really helpful to see how it is in our code in terms of the chart. I understand there's a lot of written word that walks you through each one of these process types. So, so this was really helpful and I appreciate your responsiveness. Just question wise, I think I need to hear more before another question pops up, so I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Okay. Continuing down the row, any questions?
A couple of quick questions. On particularly Process Type Four, but really any of them, are these in order of how they're administered? Like you go, say Process Type Four, it's notice to neighborhoods, and then the public hearing, then approval by the hearing examiner, and then the city does the staff report. Is this in like?
Order?
Yeah.
Um, almost. The written report by staff should be above the decision. So basically, prior to the public hearing, prior to the public hearing, staff writes a report taking in, explaining the project. It'll have all the attachments of whatever the final version of all the various paperwork is, submittals are. It has, it talks about what comp plan policies it may meet, what, that it meets all of the zoning criteria, if there were any comments, it just sort of, kind of rolls through all of that. And then like I said, depending on the project, it may have three or, you know, might have 10 attachments. I mean, I think the church had probably 50 or 60 attachments, so.
Last question. The notice of 500 feet, I see that in three and four, how is that notice given? I mean, I know that it used to be, you know, through the newspaper, and now newspapers are pretty much gone. Has Milton moved to a more electronic style of notifying neighbors like via their utility bills or emails or in the Milton Connection newsletter or?
No, and that is something I would like to, I do think is worth looking at because right now, we are still putting it in the paper. I would guess that is a, and I was surprised to see in the RCW, it says you may, it was one of the options. I always thought you had to, but it was kind of like, as long as you do certain things, you can choose from it. I really think putting in the paper is a waste of money because nobody looks at there. So it may be us looking at, right now, it is on our website, so if, and I think if you subscribe, you should probably get an update, but I think it might be worth, I don't know that we're, I don't believe we're putting it in the newsletters. It's a little challenge because they only go out once a month, but that is something. So there's some stuff there we can look at. We do physically mail to 500 feet based on Pierce County property tax or King County property tax.
To the property owners.
Yeah, so, so we do physically mail. And again, if there's, if it's, if it's a Type Four, there's two mailings. The first mailing goes out that says, here's this project, it, this is the SEPA, and I, we've always been able to, at least I've always been able to time it, and here's the neighborhood meeting, just come find out more. And then we also send it out prior to the public hearing. If it's Type Three, they get one notice that says, you know, here, this is the, and again, that I try to include, there's like required of, this is the type of information on it. I try to include a picture because people, it's a visual. Where is it compared to me and what does it look like? And then I put a specific, this is your comment window. Now, if someone comes in the day after and it's something that might be useful to know. But again, for those kind of, for those smaller projects, most of the time, I get, I just don't like it. Or, well, it's going to disturb my neighborhood, there's not a lot I can do with that. Occasionally, you get something like, hey, did you know that there, you know, there's, you know, theoretically, there could be something like, hey, did you know there's a stream back there? Because maybe they didn't tell me and I didn't realize it. Or, hey, did you know that there's an easement on something? So sometimes there's, you know, occasionally, there can be some stuff, but most of the time, that's not what we get, if we get anything. A lot of projects, we get nothing, so.
And if it's okay with the group, I just had one question about just kind of the idea of cost when you bring something up to the hearing examiner level. I don't know if it's a good idea to like ballpark what kind of the minimum cost or average cost might be.
I want to say it's a couple, I'll have to double, I can double check in for next meeting. I want to say it's a couple thousand dollars for her time, for her to come, well, review all the stuff, come and hold the hearing, and then write the final stuff.
Okay. And then I'll just take it around one more. Does anyone else have any questions about what's been discussed so far?
Yeah, this is kind of pursuant to the public comment, and actually, you just talked about that a little bit. If people bring to your attention something like, hey, there's a stream back there. Hey, did you know about the easement? Those are the kinds of things that we're really looking for in public hearing. And otherwise, what I'm taking away from this is that public notice and public comment is not to gauge public approval. So anybody may speak, but unless they have something substantive to say, they're just venting and we just allow that. Is that right?
In a lot of cases, yes. Now, again, that's where I'm going to get into, when I get into, there are a few things I think that a public hearing makes sense for, but I think there's some stuff, and looking at other cities, they don't hold public hearings for them. And so that's kind of where, yeah.
Okay, and then continuing down the row, any other, yes?
Yeah, I think Tom actually hit on something for the 500 foot notification. And why would it be that difficult to include notification in their power bills for a couple of months? To the individuals that are going to be affected? And again, I, I don't think 500 feet is sufficient in some cases. Like the projects down here, it should have been, everybody on that street should have been, excuse me, notified.
And I think what, I, I think it's worth taking some time to dig in because you want to, you want to notice the people that need to be noticed. And in some ways, a arbitrary number, I mean, my previous jurisdiction, it was 150 and 300, depending on the project. If it was really small, it was 150, if it was bigger, it was 300. Because the farther, most of the time, the farther you get out, people don't need it. And there's a cost and there's an expense and there's a time to that. Our utility bills actually don't work for that, so just on that note. I do think though, there are certain things that, yes, if it's going to affect more than, like in the Ken, the likelihood of us having a warehouse project again, that we don't, is pretty small. But we can learn from that, and I do think something like that, and that is, it falls because it ended up being a, actually, I apologize, I think, it's actually, I think, a type, yeah. It's a Type Five, and I didn't include that on here, I should have done that. There's a couple things, there's two things that are Type Fives, those that need, because that was a planned development with a development agreement that actually had to be approved by council. So it was more than just a site plan, it was more than just what the church was. So I, I do agree, and then in, in that same category of Type Five is also what they call special uses. So it would be things like if someone was going to put in a ball field or something, that would have a bigger impact. I think it does make sense to, and when we get to sort of my recommendation, there's a couple of things I think it might be worth making it 1,000 feet, and maybe put wording that says, something that, that kind of gives the idea that if it's going to, yes, it's a line, but is it affecting anything else? So in this case, we probably should have sent anything on Fifth Ave because they were going to require them to do Fifth Ave. Or I do remember there was a project in my previous jurisdiction where I realized, and again, I was just like, I typed it in, it drew the circle, it gave me the addresses, I sent them out. Well, it cut off like two properties on the end of this like block. And so those two people are like, well, why didn't we get notice? Because you were 503 feet outside. So we could put in some language that says, you know, you don't want to get too far out because then people are like, well, that one, you only did 500, why for me did you do my project at 750? So you got to make sure that you're doing, you can't be arbitrary, but I think we can put some wording in that says, you know, if it makes sense to finish out a block or a neighborhood, or if it's going to affect, if the project's going to affect street repairs a certain lay or improvements, that those should be included too.
Yeah, it'd be something like 500 feet within construction limits or something in that case.
Yeah, so I, again, I don't see us, and we, and we won't have that zone anymore because it's all developed. Anything of that magnitude. Theoretically, we might have something the magnitude of the church, but it won't be a church like that because we've changed the code there. So yes, I think noticing, and it might be worth, you know, I don't know, we'll see. If we lower everything, we probably will be fine. I mean, there are things that I think 500 is overkill for in certain projects, but it's not the end of the world, they pay for it. So we can kind of base on that. On that note, do you want to, are we ready to go to sort of my, some of my thinking and proposals, or do we still have?
Yep.
We're just on person two of the, the line, so I just want to continue down the line.
Thank you. Just a clarification, one question per round robin or two?
You're allowed whatever questions you have for round robin, so.
Oh, no, but I mean at one time, can I put forward two questions?
Yeah, that's okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because you know me. So it's like, okay, what's the most important question to ask? Which is the way it should be anyway.
The question's up.
Generally speaking, and it's, is there anything that we have to change? I mean, I appreciate the opportunity to review our process, it's been quite a while since we did such a drastic thing in 2009 with regulatory reform, it was huge. But are there any things that we have to accomplish?
We have to change the timing. Because there's some different time things. There, again, it's hard because some of the language is not as specific. It is saying that you need to make sure that it's streamlined, that it's, we have to allow for people to expedite if, or at least try to have the ability for that, which for us means we probably have to, you know, we'll continue, probably have a contract with maybe HBL or something if they want. So I'm still going through, I will say that Department of Commerce is working on some model codes. They started talking through those, I don't know if they're all fully out there, they'll be, if they, I know I sat through one of their kind of online discussion groups, talking about how they're going to give some suggestions and stuff. And then again, our MRC has some, so. There's not, it's not as clear cut as like the ADUs where it's like, you have to have these five things adopted in your stuff. It's more trying to, you know, again, these are the timelines, making it more efficient. If not, you're going to have penalties trying to go that route. So, yeah.
And just one more, I'll just abide by two per round robin to be fair. I'm understanding that once notice is published of a complete application, we have rules about where it gets published and how, which is sort of what was brought up earlier. But it, that, it allows comments on any development project, correct? That's notice, it's not just, public comment is only allowed per certain process types? Because I thought I was hearing something about if you ask people for comments on something that's pretty straightforward, they end up being frustrated because their comments are sort of.
Well, that's some of the reason why you want to think through, is if you're asking for comments, why? And if there's nothing that can be changed by those comments, then maybe asking for comments is counterproductive. is counterproductive. So if you are noticing, if we're requiring people to be noticed, they get a comment period. If they don't, like I said, you know, for home occupations, deviation of standards, uptown design review, we're not sending out notice, we're just checking, do they meet all of the requirements that they are required to do? So that's where we'll get into what, some of these, I think, I'm going to pitch some ideas that I think don't need comments, I'm going to pitch some things that I think it makes sense to have comments, but not necessarily public hearings, and then there's some that definitely need to stay with public hearings. So that's sort of my next, which I think is where we want to get to, is what we're thinking, and then we can start having conversations about noticing and why we do what we do, and so.
All right, and then Commissioner Boyle.
Last question, real quick. You don't even really have to comment, but just trying to, I'm trying to keep in mind that transparency within the city and the administration is very important, especially when you get to bigger projects. So I understand streamlining, but we also have to show transparency and give notice on these big projects. But I get where you're going, and I'm going to work with you. Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
All right, so, and again, this was my first-ditch effort to get this stuff in front of you, and start getting what's in my head and what I've experienced out, and we'll see where we go. So, looking at page 11. Oh, I did, I guess I did on the back, on page eight, it does go through pages or categories five and six, but we'll come back to those if we need to. So, a couple of things that have come out in conversations and experience, whatever, so I'm just going to go through page 11. And we may, again, tonight, we're not, I'm not expecting any decisions, I'm not expecting any consensus, I'm getting ideas out there, seeing what people are thinking, feeling what questions you're going to want from me to, so that you help understand what we're doing. One of the things that's been brought up a couple of times, and I think falls into this idea of being more efficient, looking at a project, on how much impact does it have, and trying to match that with the process it goes through. So right now, we basically have one variance process. If for anything, you have, it's a type 4, you have to go to a public hearing. So you need a half a foot of a setback, because the existing house was seven feet, and we want seven and a half, and you want an addition, the only thing you can do right now is a public hearing. So what I am proposing is, you can have a couple of different things. We do have deviation from standards for a couple of things that specifically, like land use, and I think there's like, for signs on that side of I-5, there's a couple little things, which is almost, it kind of falls into that category. So we may, again, we may want to tie language if we go through there. So I'm tossing out the idea of breaking it into three categories, keeping our, making it a major variance, and keeping that as the public hearing. And again, I don't, this is just more getting, are we interested in doing this? And then I will come back, because again, then you're just, you put in objective, if it's this percentage, or this much of a reduction, it's a public hearing. Then you have like a minor variance, which is staff level, but as a type 3, we're still sending out notices to neighbors. So it's something that, again, maybe it's, you know, if they want a foot reduction of a side yard or backyard, we still send it to the neighbors, we get their comments, because that's who's going to be affected. Maybe they say, hey, I've got a window that faces right there, or could they plant a few tree, you know, bushes? Maybe I can't require it, but a lot of times, if you say, hey, if you plant a couple bushes, your neighbor will be happy, they'd be like, yeah, that's great. So that would be what's called a minor, it'd be staff level, but we would still let people know. And then de minimis is just what we call a type 2, where there's no comment, you know, we decide it's really small. I've had one where, I think they, there was a structure, there was maximum for structure percentage, and they were using existing foundation that had a jog, but the people never built the house. Well, the person bought the property, and they were trying to use the existing, but they're like, we'd like to straighten this, and not have this little jog in our kitchen. Well, technically, it put them like, you know, half a percent over. That's something where we would just say, it's kind of like that deviation from standards. So again, maybe we mesh those in a way, but staff could just say, yes, we don't have to notify anybody, there's no impact, we'll just okay it. So anyway, those are, my desire would be to bring back, break that into three, bring back criteria and definitions, and then we can look at that. That brings me to what, and this might be a good point to say, we're going to be looking at, was it one, two, three, four, five, six different chapters right now? I am not going to put it all in one vote, one thing. So as much as they all connect, my vision is that when we get to the point of actually making recommendations, we would probably make a recommendation for each chapter separately, and then council would review and vote on each one separately, because if not, it's just overwhelming. But so much of this does interact, that it seems like kind of doing it as a check. So I'm going to stop there, and just, is there questions, initial thoughts on just variances? And if there's things that you would like, if you were open to that idea, is there things that I need, that you want me to provide information on?
And I'll switch it up, and I'll start on this side. Commissioner Boyle, any questions or comments?
No, I understand what you're doing here, and, but I just wondered, I'm just, let's just say, I'm anxious to see how you break it down between the different levels. Is it, because it's kind of like subjective, or you know what I mean? So, but yeah, I understand what you're trying to do, and it's a very good way to streamline things. But I just don't want somebody coming back and go, well, who said this? Somebody else said this, we're only moving it this far. You let this guy move it this far, you know, just, so I'm just anxious to see how you break that down, or give a description, you know what I mean, of the different variances. That's it?
Yeah. Commissioner Wayland?
Oh, I was.
I was going this way this time. Well, I skipped myself.
Okay. So first, on the example cited, as looking at it and saying, gee, it's a half foot, or it's a percent, that it's a small number, and acknowledging that criteria and definitions certainly are an important part of the understanding for the process. The thing that is, I would say, concerning, and I hope can be addressed, is the fact that people count on some parts of our code as, well, because of that rule and that number, such and such isn't going to happen. So for example, we have a minimum lot width regulation, is an easy example, and someone comes in and says, oh, I'm only two feet shy, why can't I create a lot? You know, we have, there's, I look at the way our code is functioning, and if not for but a few criteria, there can be very significant changes in what can happen in terms of development, and a category would be density. Someone, you look around your neighborhood and say, well, you know, with it being an 8,000 square foot minimum lot size, as a current example, you know, that property over there, I could anticipate two lots. Well, once you start getting into this variance sort of a thing, my brain immediately goes to, so someone comes in and says, well, I'm just 1,000 square feet less, and so that, to me, it just is, it opens up a Pandora's box. So if this is something, as a concept, that the majority of commissioners say, yeah, let's go forward with, I will pay, I think it'll be really important to have a lot of clear criteria. And you know I appeared at the TRIN variance before the hearing examiner, and one of the functions of the hearing examiner, I felt, was hear the concerns, find a way to balance it out. And I thought that she did a very effective job at that, in terms of what was wanted by the applicant, what the concern was for pattern of development in the neighborhood, and how to strike that balance. So I'm open to look into it a bit more, but what I've, I just have a lot of concerns about this, because specifically, as we get denser, those setbacks mean a lot, and someone starts to say, well, you know, can I, I want to do this easement around my house, and your rules say it's got to be 20 feet wide. Well, what if it was 18? You know, a car can fit through there, what's the problem? You know, it gets to be into a point of argument. So I see it as a bit of a slippery slope, and I understand there's a challenge to finding that balance, where no, this is the boundary. You cross it, you can't do it. And you're trying to create a gray zone, where you start to look at a whole array of factors, the way a hearing examiner might, to try to come up with a way to balance it out. But, you know, I've seen conditional use permits, okay, you can do that, but you have to do landscaping around it. And then the landscaping dies, and then you complain to the city, and, you know, it's not of a high enough priority to deal with, because you're dealing with so much. So, so that's just some of the stuff that I, I really am very ambivalent about this idea, because of how I've seen things happen in the city. And the other question or comment, more briefly, is I think receiving comment is so very important, even on some straightforward things, and hope that we do not, in our focus to streamline things, diminish the merits and the value of it, because I can give you very crisp examples of short plats going in, and it seems so straightforward, and I spoke with the planning person at the time, and they were going to let something go through, and it was just, how could you do this? Here's this part of the code that gives you the power to clean up the lines. And the person's, well, it's kind of hard to read this plat. I literally went in with my highlighter pens and said, here's lot A, here's lot B, C, and, oh, I see what you mean now. So, you know, we've got someone who's got experience now, here, working, but we won't always have that. So the other piece in all of this is to remember that skill levels rise and fall, depending upon who is behind the counter, and there, and I wouldn't have come forward on this particular thing to the happiness of a lot of people involved, unless notice was asked for. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I think the streamlining is a good idea, but like Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Wayland, I think it needs to be identified, you know, you got to be able to look at something to give you some direction on that variance, or a way to proceed with that variance. So I'd like to see how some of that would come out. Other than that, I'm good.
And Commissioner Oller, or Vice Chair Oller?
Yeah, I, just to be really clear on what we're proposing to do, variance becomes three things, major variance, minor variance, and de minimis variance, and they are type 4, type 3, and type 2, respectively, to be determined and defined. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, and I agree, we're, was it, the devil is in the details?
So yeah, to clarify, she's saying, we want to create those details, we're not there yet, but are you guys even open to the idea of variance, minor variance, and de minimis, and putting some of that authority back in the city's hands versus having it go to a hearing examiner, which is
For everything.
$2,500 cost to the city, because someone wants to move.
Plus time.
And the time and resources and everything else, because someone wants, you know, I think we had someone here about their ADUs, because they were five feet under or over.
Yeah, so what I would do is I would bring, at the next meeting, kind of the starting spot, based on what I'm seeing other cities do. And that would sort of be the starting for both, the breakdown of, you know, what's the definition of a minor, what's the definition of a major. De minimis, like I said, we also have this deviation from standards that's already in our code, so the de minimis variance may not make sense, it may just be that we look, that we keep the, that's sort of what the deviation from standards, because, and again, those have real specific, for specific things. So that last one may not be worth doing, but I think we at least want a variance, it would make sense to make a minor variance. And then, yes, the planning commission and the council get to decide, where is that, where's that definition mark, and what is that criteria? And I will say, I don't love variance criteria. Sometimes I feel like it, I don't know, there's issues with that, so this is an opportunity that we can also look at, what's the criteria for each? You know, I agree with Commissioner Wayland, that a major variance should have a real significant reason for it. And a lot of times, I mean, you know, there are, we have places, I mean, where you live, that you might need a variance, or along the lake of the front yard, or else you don't get to build a house, because of the way it drops off on the hillside, or because of the, so maybe there's some physical things to a property that makes sense, that we have to do that variance. And so I think it's worth looking at that criteria, and making sure we're hitting those marks. Again, minor variance would have slightly less restrictive, but again, there needs to be criteria, it can't just simply be, I want it. You know, there needs to be a reason. Like I said, we've had places where the existing house is seven feet or six and a half, and they just want to make their, you know, they want to add an addition, but they don't want to have to jog it in a half a foot or a foot. It's not, you know, the neighbors already are used to a house, if we add five or 10 more feet, it's probably fine, there's reasons there. But again, that comes into, how do we write that criteria? How do we do that breakdown? So I will bring back, again, it's a starting point, and then we will have time. And considering how many, you know, some of this, I don't know how much we're changing, if we decide that some of these, we do want to dig in more, this may take longer than we thought, which is why it's great that we have this meeting, that we can kind of dig in early and see where we're at. So I will bring back, again, some suggestions and go for there. All right, so my biggest kind of suggestion, I think, kind of goes into where we're hitting minor and major site plans. And again, in the site, those are where I think, and again, I will bring back next week, the actual codes with suggestions, and I can send stuff between there. What I would like to do, again, major, site plans and our criteria, those are all things that are allowed outright, for things that are allowed outright, authorized use. They are a commercial building in a commercial zone. There is, the site plan criteria is things like, the lights need to shine inward, not outward. It's very objective. There's a couple of things that I would like to, that I'm recommending we do, and so we, again, this is for thought and initial take. One, I would like, right now, the difference between a minor site plan and a major site plan is 200 square feet. SEPA require, is required for 4,000 square feet, or over 4,000 square feet. I would like those to match. If, if it requires SEPA, then it's a major site plan. If it doesn't require SEPA, it's a minor site plan. That makes sense when you get into what's required for noticing, and all that kind of stuff. It's also, again, that, it also ties it to something. Now, reversely, it's not on this list, but we say that a, you can have up to five lots be a minor site, or a minor, yes, let's say you're doing an apartment complex, and there's five units, or you're doing a five-plex, or a three-plex and a dual. Or you're doing a fiveplex, or a threeplex and a duplex on the one property. Our code says that's a minor site plan. But under SEPA, five or more, you do need to do a determination. So I'd actually like to move that one, again, to match. So on one end, I'm asking you to increase your square footage, on the other one, I'm actually downgrading the units, because it seems like that's a logical thing to tie it to. Because you have to do noticing, you have to do a determination, you have to, you want people that, you know, the people get a comment if it hits, if it has to have a determination. So that makes sense to me, to tie those together. I'm also going to recommend that because everything is very objective, it's an allowed use, that makes, you know, that in the area, and when you look at the examples I sent out by email, I mean, you can have a 6,000 square foot house, and all we do is require building permits, but you have a 3,500 retail, and we're making them jump through a lot of hoops. So my suggestion is that if it doesn't require SEPA, so it's a minor site plan, we're going to move it to a type two, which has, it has no noticing, that they're just, it's similar to a house, that they have to meet all the criteria, and if they meet all the criteria, then they're approved. If they require SEPA and they're over, so I think, I said it's over 4,000, or it's 4,000 and over, I'll have to double check how that works. I'm recommending moving it to type three. So we're still sending, at that point, we're still sending out notice, and there's a comment What I am thinking would make sense, and I believe Tacoma does this, is for those, like I said, so if it's a major site plan, 4,003 square feet building, we're going to send the 500-foot notice. If X percentage, or so many people, three, five neighbors that got our notice properties say, hey, we want to know more about this, they could request a public, just a neighborhood meeting. That's what Tacoma does. I was in one where they were doing, because these retirement center was putting these like four-over garage or whatever, and it went out. And if there was enough people that wanted a neighborhood meeting to know more, they would hold that. But it's a staff level review, because again, there's nothing, it's all straightforward. They meet the criteria. It's a commercial building in a commercial zone, or it's a, you know, it's a construction yard in a construct, in the industrial manufacturing zone. And that's where I kind of went through here on the ones that I emailed to everybody, is kind of saying, this is, these are things. And let's see, I did, what's the other one? So for some of the examples, I mean, for the one-story retail building with parking lot, did not require SEPA, it was allowed by zone. We had three people attend the neighborhood meeting, one of them was a planning commission member. The only one that came to the public hearing and testified was a planning, and I am pointing out because it appears that most of who comes to these are planning commission members and city council members, they're not the actual neighbors. Again, it had the hearing examiner, went with the recommendation, all that. The car wash with parking lot, again, zero residents came, it's commercial in a commercial area. We had two planning commission, two council members, nobody came to the public hearing. So again, my proposal, in that case, it was a 5,000. So my proposal for, so my proposal for, in essence, Sherwin-Williams, would be, I feel like it should just be an outright, it's under 4,000, there's no SEPA, they meet all the criteria, the engineers look at it, the traffic looks at it, they meet all the criteria, they get approved. For the car wash, which was 5,000, so it does require SEPA, we do do notice, but we allow comment period, and we allow the option, if enough people say, yes, I want to hear more about this, we would allow them to do a neighborhood, we would do a neighborhood meeting. I put five, it could be three. Again, we're not very big, so maybe that's that. So those are what I'm thinking for those things that are allowed, that are allowed uses. If you go to our table, it says it's allowed outright. Now, for those that are conditional use permits, and for subdivisions, I'm saying, and binding site plans, I'm saying we leave it at type four. Those make sense because there are enough, they're, we're saying, by saying it's a conditional use permit, that that's not the normal kind of thing. There's something about it that's unusual. So for us, it would have been, so like the Murnan Apartments, or that's what I know them as, so that supposedly, we're going to get apartments at the corner of Porter and Milton Way. The zoning is not multifamily, if it had been multifamily, it would have been one thing, but it's in the medium density. So really, that's primarily single-family houses and duplexes. So it was a conditional use permit. I'm saying, yes, leave it as a neighborhood meeting and a public hearing, because by being a conditional use permit, we're saying, yes, this is going to have some extra complications. It's not the standard for that area. So in that case, and again, looking at what we had, we had seven-plus residents at the neighborhood meeting. We had three residents, neighbors testify at the public hearing, and there was some stuff that the hearing examiner, some conditions, because the conditional use permit says, this is a unique use, you can add conditions to address things that maybe you can't think of. And so there was some stuff added, there's some extra vegetation, they need to get back to us on something else. So to me, that may, that, those are things, and if you look at other cities, conditional use permits always have hearings, because that's what you're saying. There's something about this that's different. If I looked at the other cities, so far, none of them for site plan, some of them don't have any noticing at all. I think it makes sense for some of the bigger ones, it doesn't hurt, and I think having a notice with a comment helps us in case there's something we missed, and, but keeping those at staff level. And then the last one is, then I am also recommending for the type four, because I know there's been comment about those bigger projects. So yeah, let's say it's over 50,000 square feet, I think that was the size of the church, was over that, or over 50 units, something that's even larger than we're used to, let's do 1,000 square feet. And then maybe we add language that says, and any street that's going to be, you know, any civil part that's going to be tied to that. And then I also think the top type five, which would have been the warehouses, which would be if somebody did what we consider special use stuff, I think that should be 1,000 feet, because those are, again, larger, non-standard things that would become, it would be like if someone wanted to put in a stage, not like a little stage, but like an arena, not that we have the land for, but you know, if somebody did something really like that, it would make sense that that's going to affect a larger area. So I'm recommending that we, that that would make sense to go to like 1,000 feet. And then I will come back with the application tables, just meeting the, what we take now, what we don't take now, and that's more of a cleaning that up. So I will stop now and let you process and comment and ask questions on what I am tossing out, because I think that's the biggest change. But like I said, when I started looking at all the, all the cities, they either don't have any process at all for site plan, or it was at a staff level administrative, they may send out notice, they may not send out notice.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'll start off with just saying, I really appreciate the recognition of the feedback you've heard over the last few years of, here's where I think we can be a little looser, and here's where I've heard you and I want to be stricter, and actually, I want to enhance what we already have, or be more diligent going forward. So thank you for that. And with that, I'll take questions or comments, and I'll start on this side again with Commissioner Boyle.
I don't have much, just that I can appreciate what you're trying to accomplish here, and I know, dealing with builders, and the complaints I hear are always about how drawn out the permit process is, and trying to streamline it, streamline that for them and for taxpayers is a, is a good thing. So whatever we can work out here, I know it's not just about making your job easier at all, right? Not at all. But no, I think, and then just, you know, things like this need to be updated, and so this, this is a good time, so. And I appreciate there's so many graphs and tables with this that I've tried to wrap my head around over the years, and you've broken down and given these examples, it makes it very helpful. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll continue it this week. Commissioner Wayland?
Thank you. I don't know enough about SEPA to understand the thresholds, so perhaps I need to do homework on that.
I can, Albert can bring stuff back to help.
Okay, because I can see what you're trying to say in terms of what's the rationale and how we do this, and there were several bright minds that created what we have now way back when, so rationales or understandings can change. So I can see the tie-in, I just wonder, in your experience, that it's not just about square feet. You could have a little site that has a really big impact. So when I hear if it's at this threshold, that's when SEPA, I'm imagining there's other things that come into play. For example, someone might want to have a home occupation, let's just say. Well, it doesn't seem to be a SEPA-oriented type of thing, but what if it's a really noisy home occupation, like they're making, you know, wood and metal toys for something? You know, the sound generated from something like that goes way out, and would affect a lot of people, not just the immediate folks. So I would be curious to see how we could really look at a project overall for its variety of impacts. And I know you can't take the applicant's word for some of these things, or they might underplay some things and see if you catch it. I can see what you're trying to do, it's just, just to base it on 4,000 or square footage seems to be not enough to say this is major or minor. And is that a situation where we, we have to change our table of uses? And that, because what I thought I heard you saying was something about if it's allowed outright versus a conditional use permit. But I would think that there are some things allowed outright that could have such huge impacts still, that SEPA would be required.
Yes, so SEPA is not, SEPA doesn't care what we allow or don't allow.
Oh, okay.
And I will bring those, so yes, basically, the SEPA threshold, it basically in the WAC, Washington Administrative Codes, so the RCW says you must have environmental stuff, and then the WAC goes through and does more detail, sort of like, a little bit like comp plan and zoning, sort of. But it basically says, if your projects are, you know, A, B, C, D, or E, meet these criteria, you're exempt from having to make a determination if the project would have environmental impacts. And like I said, we are at the bare minimum. It actually allows you to adopt higher exemptions, but I'm not even messing with that right now. I'm just thinking that it would be nice to you, to match those, but I will bring that wording back. There is also, it's actually like a certain square footage, plus how many parking spaces. And so I think the way I was looking at it is parking, because I think we say impervious surface, but that gets a little funky, so I think I was saying something like, kind of, again, trying to match is like, I think it's exempts 4,020 parking spaces, and so I'm saying 4,020 parking spaces or the equivalent impervious surface. So somebody can't say, why don't they have three? But they're like paving the whole thing. Something, you know, trying to get at that. So I'll bring that back so we can look at it, and we can also look at what we could increase it to, but again, I'm not at this point, I don't know that that's necessary for us right here. And then what it does is, one, if it's a big enough project, like, I don't know how the, I'll have to see what the warehouses did, but certain big projects actually have to do a full environmental impact statement, and that's what you're looking at. Do we think they need to do a full impact statement? Most projects don't if your city has environmental rules, which we do. So if you've done the buffers and you make them, you know, follow all of our rules, then most don't need to do an environmental impact statement, because we've already kind of provided that. Back in the day, cities didn't have environmental codes, so you had to do a full environmental, and you had to have mitigation to say, no, you can't be right next to the creek, you can't be right next to the lake, that's a hillside that's going to fall. But now we have codes that say, your buffer is this, if, yes, you can straighten the line, but you're going to improve this over here. So most projects, as long as you're, they're following what our code says, and our code has been approved by the state, and then they're going to get what's called a notice of nonsignificance. Yeah, determination of nonsignificance, on a rare occasion, determine, like, the warehouses might have got a determination of nonsignificance with mitigation.
Yeah.
I don't know that they had to do, but I'd have to look, thankfully I wasn't here for all of their chaos. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at with those. So I'll bring that back so you can see, and again, that's why you don't have to do for single-family, because it's on the list that says, you, for a residential home and up to four residential homes or four units, you don't have to do it. If not, we would have to, so.
Just a second question. Thinking about some of the things that can happen on property and seeing dirt being moved around, and knowing folks who had a vacant lot to their rear that was uphill of them, and then a development, a four-lot short plaque goes in, and now they've got water flooding issues. And, and the concerned, I'm thinking of one specific example, I'm not saying all things are that way. But it was, the city's perspective on it was, well, you know, the comment period's closed, too late, and this person saying, but look, I never had this kind of flooding problem in my yard until what was done uphill happened. So A, that again informs me about noticing people, signs on property, et cetera, but B, to just have a lot of boxes checked, I just, I just have, I've seen too many real-life things fall apart as you have, so I hope that informs you in this process, in terms of protecting.
My, my statement to that is, when it comes to something like a stormwater, they have to give us documentation that they have done the correct studies, and they have to have a stormwater plan, and they have to meet the new 2019 Stormwater Manual for Western We hand that to our engineers, and they review it, and they send back comments, and they analyze it. And basically, just on a side note, you're allowed, basically you have to, you have to process any new runoff you're going to have. So if you already sort of ran off on your neighbor's property, you can continue to run off that amount, which, I don't know if that's good or bad, but that's the way it is. But if you build a house, the assumption is, okay, now you've just taken off grass, and that would have gone through, you need to process it. So I guess I would say, the challenge is that, yes, someone can, I mean, if someone's going to comment, they're not going to know till after the project's done that it maybe is not working right. So the comment period doesn't help with that. And we're going to, all of those plans would have been reviewed and approved by engineers, and so as long as they are meeting the code and they're showing that it works, and I'll say, our engineers are good, right? And there's something to be said for, which is a whole nother conversation for council, but for the fact that we have a contract, engineers, we hire a company that has many specialties. So when I send them stuff, I have my civil guy who deals with all my street stuff and some of the piping stuff, but we've got a whole nother gal that deals with the stormwater, and I'm sure there's several of them. So we've got nice specialties that review that. So they're reviewing it for those things, and it should work. Now, it could be that it's just not working if something's doing right. I know there's got one we're talking to, but I don't think it's what he thinks it is, I think it's something else that's causing it, but there's nothing I can do. If it was done right, yeah. Anyway, that's my comments on those. If it was done right, yeah. Anyway, that's my comments on those.
All right, continuing down the road.
I believe that you're on the right track. And I'd like to see some, a little more information next, our next meeting. And we definitely have to have a conversation over impervious surfaces. Because I got in an argument with one of our building inspectors because I was trying to put concrete on my driveway because it's, you have to four-wheel to get up it, literally, from 10th Avenue. But I also have, my driveway comes from M-lock across the front of the house and then back down to M., or 10th. And he says, no, you can't because you already got too much surface. And it's all impervious. And gravel, I don't care who in the hell came up with that idea that gravel is impervious.
Oh, yeah, they do consider it.
That's stupid. Why do they use gravel in drains and septics and everything? So it can drain.
Yeah, except for the fact that gra, again, not to get into too deep on, because it's a slight, a slight tangent. But gravel, if it's rock that is relatively clean, yes, you can do that. Gravel that's used on driveways gets compacted, it gets dirt, and it does basically become solid. Though, on the flip side though, I am yet to find where there's a limit to impervious for residential in our city. You just have to pay more on the stormwater. So yes, let's have a separate, let's have a separate conversation. Though I do think we should have one at some point. No, I know it's something we've brought up. So we just need to, at a different time, have that conversation and see what we've got.
Right.
And look at your driveway.
Yeah, it's a mess. That's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have some thoughts. I'm generally supportive of the intent for the variance and for minor site plan and for SEPA. I'm, I was looking at Process Three on the Process Types document. And I noticed that some of the things in there are optional. And in fact, for de minimis versus minor, it would be hard to tell if things are optional. So for instance, the pre-application meeting under Process Three is optional. Under Four, it's recommended, and under Two, it's none. Also optional is the neighborhood meeting. And the only other optional on this chart is the optional neighborhood meeting in Legislative Process Six. So if we're going to be making this more clear, obvious as to what the process is, maybe we might look at either, for the variance, getting rid of de minimis and just doing major and minor like you already suggested because of the possible confusion in Process Three as to what's, what optional means. Or maybe we change optional to a different wording, like recommended? Some of the others say recommended. I don't know. Maybe I don't understand the optional process.
I don't have it. Somehow I handed out stuff and don't have it in front of me. Yeah, for the, so pre-application, my understanding is we can't, we used to be able to require it. I don't, I think there's a state law that says you can't require it. That's sort of, the applicant gets to choose that in most cases. Sometimes it's their advantage to do it. Some things are so straightforward, it's not necessary. So that's kind of why it's there. I think, like I said, I'm thinking with a neighborhood meeting for Process Three, that's where I'm kind of thinking something like, if we send out notices and X number of residents would like one, then we require it, kind of thing. If it's something, like I said, I very seldom get any response back when I send out notices for the small stuff. I don't get a lot of response back for, I mean, like I said, we've had neighborhood meetings where nobody shows up other than maybe a council member or something. Now, the bigger ones do, because, and that makes sense. So I'm trying to find that line. But I, I was thinking, that's where I kind of think of, maybe we put something where like, again, if X number, either a percentage or a number of property owners, people who received the notice, request a neighborhood meeting, then we hold one. Instead of just optional, because yeah, I would never require, then that puts it on us to maybe say, or them, and that's a little vague. So yes, maybe make it more objective, so. And we can always, if it's just one or two, two people who have questions, they can come talk to me. And I have yet to have a developer that's not happy to talk to somebody who has questions. So maybe we don't have to do a full neighborhood meeting at night. But I can say, hey, this person has questions. Can you meet with them? And they would do that, so.
All right, I'll take it for another round. Does anyone else have any further questions? Just going around, one once, twice. All right?
I have a quick thing.
Yeah.
Sometimes people are discussing things and I would like a point of clarification. When we're doing Round Rob, is it still okay to say, hey, point of clarification? When you say DOC, do you mean Washington Department of Commerce? Or do you mean the US Department of Commerce? Is that still allowable, or do I wait?
Oh, yes. Okay. Yeah, point of clarifications are acceptable.
Excellent.
And I would mean Washington Department of Commerce. And yes, if I throw, I try really hard not to throw out the acronyms and the planning speech because I know it's so frustrating for people who don't know it. But sometimes it just comes out. So yes, feel free to say, I.
Point of clarification.
I've done it in meetings. I'm like, I think I'm supposed to know that term, but I don't know. I mean, I've been at trainings that are for planners and people will toss things out. And I'm like, I, I'm guessing I'm not the only one that has no idea what that stands for.
All right. Yeah, so interruptions are allowed for point of convenience and point.
Of convenience?
Point, what was that?
Clarification?
Point of clarification. And then also there was another one that I wrote down and I forgot, but basically.
Point of order and point of clarification, correct?
Yeah, point of order, point of clarification. And then also like, it's too loud, can you turn things down? Like I've.
Housekeeping.
Huh?
Housekeeping.
Yeah, I just, I'm spacing the name of it, but there's just the one last one. For, you know, can you speak up, or you're too loud, or there's a fan, something like that. Can we take a body break? Whatever. But those were kind of the, the three, you're allowed to interrupt. All right, yes.
The point of information?
Point of information, I think so. Yeah, I'll go back to my list. It's the one that I always forget. But I read it and was like, oh, I like that one. I can't remember the name of it.
Point of clarification. What's the difference between point of information and point of clarification? They sound the same.
They might be.
Might be. But if you, if you yell either one, I'll, I'll acknowledge you. All right, moving forward.
So that is it, I think, for today's tackling of understanding the process and a little bit of where I'm going with this. So if there's anything either now or you think of in the next week or so that you would like, like I said, I'm gonna bring back at the next meeting the specific chapter. So you'll get copies of the chapters, some of the specific changes that, that I think we want to start with. And then, and again, we will have to fit that in, which is the, the last, Type B is a little bit talking of schedules. But, so, I don't know, like I said, I don't know if there's anything that anyone's like, yes, I know for sure I want this information, or if you just want to think on it for the week and if you think of more things that I can bring to the next meeting. But I will definitely bring the specific chapters for everybody as well as some of the language criteria, things that I'm, I'm thinking of. And that will give us the next kind of step that we can go through.
Perfect. All right, so with that, I think that takes us to Agenda Item 6B.
So and I realized that on my computer, I swear there was lines. So if that is not as clear as it was intended to be, I must have just seen the like guidelines and thought that I had put lines, so I, and I missed it. I need to review it better when Tricia says, please review this. So again, it's sort of a work in progress as we fine-tune things, as we get through different steps. We'll fill in as we go. I did get a couple of the drafts from Framework this week. I'm reviewing them, kicking it back for stuff that I find first before I send it out to Planning Commission. But once we've done that, and there's a few things, I'm meeting with her tomorrow. There's a few things I have questions on and stuff. And so hopefully by, in the next couple of weeks, we'll get the first rounds of drafts, at least the first stuff to Planning Commission, to start looking at what the actual comp plan's gonna look like and taking all of that information we've been working on for a year and a half and start putting it in form. I am asking if we are okay. Let's see, April. So they are asking, I apologize for this. I believe they would like a special meeting. I know for sure, I was wanting to see if May 29th, which would be a special meeting, would work for the public hearing.
Is that nearly, I'm sorry, Memorial Day?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, okay.
It's the Wednesday after Memorial Day.
Let me look at my calendar.
So the idea being that we would hold the public hearing as a special meeting in May. And then that means that we can come back in, at the first meeting in June with the hopes of making a recommendation. Because I do have to, for our timeline, we really need to make a recommendation on the comp plan by June, both for the grant that I gotta turn in. But also because at that point, we want, by then, we want to start working on the, the development codes in the zoning code that match what we've said in the comp plan. That's that second piece that we feel like didn't happen last time. So that will be then us looking at, and Framework will come with, I believe, some drafts, but saying, okay, we've now said that we don't just have a general business, we have up-down or we have neighborhood commercial. What does that mean if somebody comes in to build something? And so that we'll be looking at the use table. That we'll be looking at, basically we'll get new zoning chapters that match. And maybe there's two types of neighborhood, maybe there's not. So that's that, that gives us six months to try to lock in some of that, which will be the actual details that we need to do to make sure that the comp plan carries through. It may identify other stuff. We may decide, yes, we're, you know, we, we have this. But I know, you know, Commissioner Waylon has mentioned maybe some design guidelines for certain things. Or maybe, you know, again, I think we do need to look at, you know, again, it doesn't hurt every decade or so. That's kind of why the state requires this, to say, you know, should our landscaping, does it still work for us? Does, do we need some general, again, it, design guidelines don't have to be what color, but it could be some general, like, if you're gonna do, you know, cottage housing, it has to have a little more character than if you just have one single, you know, there's things you can look at. And that may be something that we can't get all of that in, but maybe we can identify. But they are at least going to get us what those zone, so that the zoning map and the zoning chapters of the actual descriptions, the districts, match what we're saying we want. So we want to have time to do that. And so to do, that's what I'm trying to get at. So to have time to do that, I would like to do the hearing, which basically is for the most part what we've already talked about and the map that we've come up with. And then a lot of it will be like, the pros plan, which the city council will be adopting, will become the parks element. So in essence, that work's been done. It just will become one of our chapters. Where we're waiting for traffic, a lot of the traffic is just making sure we meet the rules of the state and Puget Sound Regional Council. So all of those will be coming in. So.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
At, at the public hearing, would we also be meeting immediately thereafter to debrief it, or?
So you'll get the drafts, hopefully, the end of this month versus next month. So we'll have the opportunity to discuss, and then I think he can come, yeah, they're planning on coming to the April 10th. So hopefully, we will be able to discuss with Framework at April 10th, those draft versions.
So if I'm understanding correctly, so we're going to get chapter drafts April 10th? Or, I mean, prior to, but then we'll discuss it in a meeting April 10th. You're hoping to, in addition, have a special meeting that would be a public hearing on May 29th? Would that be looking at the full two-hour like we usually do, or is that just the hearing?
It can be, I mean, we can, you can make it what you want.
So that we can play by ear based off of what we learn on April 10th?
Going into it and we just need to hold the hearing and there's not much we want to, unless we have a ton of people, it may be like, we're really comfortable. We just have to ha, hold the hearing to see if anyone has comments. If we're still feeling like we are fine-tuning some stuff, then you could discuss it as well. With the idea that the recommendation, our recommendation goal is June 12th.
Okay, so basically put May 29th as a placeholder in your calendar. And then by April 10th, we'll know how long that should be.
My understanding is Framework will be here April 10th. That leaves us the May meeting as well, our regular May meeting. And then May 29th, an extra meeting for the hearing. That puts it as late as possible so that by June. So that gives us a couple of meetings in there, is my thinking.
Okay, great. Just checking with the group, is April, or sorry, May 29th is a placeholder. Sound okay? All right, I'm getting heading down. So I think we're good as far as just putting that as a placeholder for public hearing, special meeting. Not totally sure, but we want to at least preserve that date.
And tied to that, which I'm glad we can, if it sounds like that date works, I have the templates. So for all of the properties that we are proposing a, pretty much a pretty good change in what they're doing. So like, we have saw, you know, if we're going from Business District to 99 Commercial, I'm not, those are basically in the same ballpark. It's a commercially type zone. But those properties that we have that are going, that we are proposing to go from like an M1 to a commercial type zone, or we have some that are commercial that are going to be residential. So those that are actually like changing pretty good. I have templates, letters, ready that we're hoping to send out Friday or Monday that will basically say, we're, you know, this is what we're doing. Staff, Planning Commission, we're early in the process. Your property is, been identified as possibly changing from this to this. In most cases, I think people will be very happy because I think what they, in, in most of those cases, what they have doesn't make sense and we're making it more logical. But it basically says, you're welcome to email, call, meet with me. I will meet with them after hours if that's more convenient, because I can do that. Just to get, so that people are aware of what we're doing. And if there's any concerns, tell us now, or early on, so that people feel like we're. And there's a couple of them, I think there's only maybe one area that what we're changing potentially the neighbors could, might be concerned. So I'm sending a circle. Again, most of them are like the houses on 70th that we have zoned commercial, and they're all houses. And we're gonna change it to residential. I, I, those people, I can't imagine are gonna be upset about that because that matches what they have. I think someone looked at a map and it made sense to say, oh, it's along 99. Unfortunately, they're on a hillside and that doesn't work. It's like the couple of properties that we have, anyway, they're just wrong. There's a couple just wrong zoned. Or like, we have the manufacturing on the corner of Taylor and Meridian. We've recommended that for commercial because it doesn't make sense to have manufacturing there. So there's, that one, again, I don't think the, for the neighbors, we're actually downgrading it. So that should make them happy. For the property owners, they might care. They might go, that's fine, that falls, you know, I'm telling them what. So anyway, those letters will be going out at the latest next week. And that way we'll get a feel if there's any property owners that we're proposing to drastically change if they have any concerns. I really think for most of them, they'll be happy because it makes more sense. And in that letter, I am saying, we, the first public hearing, we think is gonna be this date. And then we will advertise. We will, there's no reason we can't put it in the newsletter and a few other things to get people knowing. And then we will advertise, um, we will, there's no reason we can't put it in the newsletter and a few other things to get people knowing. And we, it's always on our website and stuff, so we're hoping to get, if people hopefully pay attention.
Next meeting's going to be a big packet.
Yeah.
Well, and you may get, yeah, and you may get it before then, we'll see, but we'll see.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, sorry.
Yes, let's go down the road.
A clarifying question, uh, the letters that you were describing, they're not only going to the individual property owner whose property is proposed to change in zoning in a significant way. Are you notifying a, uh, you know, 25 feet out, or 50, or something around the neighborhood, someone?
I am if, so when we talk about zoning, we talk about like upzoning and downzoning. And I think upzoning means it's, has greater impact on the neighbors. Downzoning does not. And so, in the case that, like I said, there's one, um, like the property that is on, is it Fife Way, that there's the, we have our electrical substation, and then there's like, basically manufacturing, but it's zoned residential. And we're proposing a commercially zone. I am notifying the neighbors, because in essence, it is upzoning, meaning that even though it's already there, we are saying, well, we're going to keep it so that it can keep commercial. So in that case, I am doing neighbors. Of the case of like the str, it's like, there's the strip that's going from along 70th and 99, that's going from business to residential, I'm not, because I don't see, there's no changing impact, because that's what's already there. So I'm sort of, kind of case by case, looking at what makes, you know, is what we're proposing going to have a potential negative impact versus it's just changing it to what's already there. It's kind of, or like in that case, there's not really even neighbors because of the way the streets go.
Yeah.
Just to add on to that, is that for some circumstances in the city, people may see something and it's just, boy, that is just so wrong there. I hope the new owners will make the change to do what the zoning calls for. So you have these legacy properties, for whatever reason, how, in a, like this property that you're discussing, um, on Fife Way, it's been zoned residential for a long time, and I could, I could speculate that there are people who say, oh, in, in a similar type of a circumstance, maybe someday the new owner will get into the groove here. So just to assume that because it's status quo, there may be people looking at it saying, I really hope someday that property owner will get with the program and change the use on the property. So, uh, I guess it's a case by case from your perspective.
Yeah, and like I said, I'm looking at case by case, area by area. Like I said, in most, if it's, like, again, that's, a lot of the, there's like three of the areas, they're currently zoned M1, we're moving them to the equivalent of a commercial. Very similar, but actually less impactful. Because, um.
I'd say for the sake of conversation and the fact that we're almost near eight, I just want to make sure we're being respectful of everyone's evening.
Anyway, I, I will look at those case by case, I just want to let you know that those are going out as part of our, uh, public notice stuff.
Perfect. Any other comments or questions about the upcoming schedule, or notices going out about the coming, the upcoming schedule? Sorry, I just wanted to.
No, that's the way it should be. Real quickly, so we're doing, uh, March, or excuse me, May 29th, and an additional meeting on June 12th, or isn't, is that our regular meeting on June 12th?
That's our regular meeting.
Okay, so the only additional meeting is just the one on May 29th.
Right now.
Right now. May I suggest that we look at something else in April, because as Commissioner Boyle mentioned, the anticipation is come the end of this month, we're going to get a very big packet. If Framework is coming in and doing a presentation, that often takes an hour and 45 minutes. So if there's a need for us to really process it mentally and thoughtfully, and come back and provide comment.
I think the intent, if it's okay, is that the house bill stuff isn't, the, the stuff that we discussed tonight, that we previewed, isn't as urgent. So if it's okay with the group, I'd like to have Framework first, and have the availability to move that to a later meeting as an agenda item, if that ends up running over.
And we can pause it if we need to, but I figured this was a good.
Yeah, we have the, the time available this meeting. All right, continuing down, any other questions about schedule? All right, with that, I'll take it to staff reports.
I got enough, I've talked too much.
Um, Commissioner Reports, we'll start on this side, Vice Chair Oler.
Yeah, um, apologies for missing last time, but I did watch it on YouTube, so I'm all caught up on what y'all discussed, and I think you did a great job, thanks. Other than that, I'm really interested to work on the Milton Comprehensive Plan. I've recently, after a long time of not going to Tacoma, driven through the hilltop of downtown Tacoma, and it has changed radically in a very short period of time to a lot of apartments, a lot of high rises, that were formerly single-family residences. If you haven't been downtown Tacoma lately, I'd encourage you to check it out and see what's happening. I feel like we have an opportunity to do the right thing for Milton. I'm a little worried about what Tacoma's doing, I'm not sure those apartments have parking attached to them, so good luck with that Tacoma. Anyway, that's all I got.
All right, continue down the road.
I just want to say thank you, everybody, for using your microphones, and I was able to hear the entire meeting.
Perfect.
I, I appreciate your thoughts, keeping, using the mics. I'm done, thanks.
No comment, thank you.
First, I wanted to clarify the, um, item I mentioned earlier, it's point of privilege is the other thing you can say as far as to interrupt, and that is for, you know, something's too loud, I'm cold, whatever, so it's privilege is the word I was looking for. For anyone that was still curious. I also do just want to say thank you, Angelie, just for, from what we're seeing. It's nice to see the visuals coming about, I think that really helps with our discussions. Being a visual and seeing those aligned, and I also appreciate that I'm seeing that more and more of our feedback from the last year or two of working together is starting to come into play, and it, it's helping guide the conversations, and I think make them more efficient as we go. So thank you for all the effort and time that takes to do. Throw that in the notes, brag on yourself. Oh, I skipped, no, you said no comment.
Uh, no, I, I just commented, uh, I've noticed the, uh, construction's kind of slowed down on the, uh, Porter Way, or the, uh, Fifth Avenue, but, uh, as far as the street improvements, but I guess that must be weather related. And, uh, hopefully they're not going back and doing things over again. I see a lot of concrete being ripped out and re-poured and things like that, but, uh, unfortunately, I see this in this city over the last 15 years. That, I don't know if it has to do with, uh, scheduling or contractors, I'm guessing it's contractors. We're getting this weather sensitive work, and they're trying to force it in during the wet seasons. When you're trying to, you know, create subgrade and get compaction and, uh, pour concrete during the winter months, you get poorer quality in the long run. And I've always questioned why this happens and never given a straight answer, but, um, it happens and it's frustrating. But, uh, it is nice to be seeing things being done, so. And they have been very good with their traffic control, I don't know, I, I've, they've been very good. I mean, there's days, you know, where they got to do what they got to do, but, uh, it's nice seeing things getting done.
Yeah, I may add to it, yeah, and from what I understand, I think they've got one more round of paving. The first layer of pavement was just to make sure they didn't have to track but all winter. Um, so it's a lot of just making sure everything's at the right elevations, and then do final pave and stripe.
Yeah, and they can't pave until they hit the.
Weather window.
The, I think, is it April 1st that they can, there's a, Wash Dot has a, a time period because of the weather that they can't. And if you're seeing them rip anything out, it's because our engineers went and said, nope, that doesn't match the plan, fix it.
Yeah. All right, great, well, with that, it is eight o'clock, I call this meeting adjourned.